To our March 4, 2016 Board of Supervisors Special Meeting for Calaveras County. Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so do we have any announcements by the Board this morning? No? So, public comments. Any item of interest to the public that is within subject matter jurisdiction of the Board and is not posted on the content of regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the Board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If the public comment is completed before the 30 minutes allotted time period, the Board may immediately move to the regular agenda. If the public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued at the conclusion of the content agenda in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. And, any public comments? This big, wow, look at all that, huh? All right, so let's get on with the regular agenda. And Administrative Office.
Hey, good morning, and thank you, thank you to the Board for a meeting on short notice and on a special meeting like this so that we can get our, the, what is called the HMGP and the FMAG grants in to both FEMA and CALOES as soon as possible, hopefully today. They did give us, they did give us up till next Tuesday, but we hope to get this taken care of today. So, as the Board is aware, back on January 25, the, we had a meeting with our, our weekly meeting with FEMA, CALOES, and others, and in that meeting, it was brought up by a member of FEMA that we needed to get in some notices of intent for, for a mat, what we call a match letters, for both the HMGP and the FMAG grants. The Board, the following day, on January 26, went ahead and by a 4th, 5th vote, approved to add the item to the agenda. The Board also approved the match letters to go out. Since that time, we have been working on the actual grants themselves, and there's just a little bit of background here. We have, we have CalAM here today, and, and they have done a tremendous amount of work on this, beginning, I want to say, in, in October, and they've been working with county staff through, strongly through December, I'm aware of that, they can certainly correct me when they get up to speak, but on, on this HMGP and then the FMAG. In your, in your package, you'll notice a little H in the right corner of one, and you'll notice a little F on the other. The reason I did that is because it's very difficult to tell these two applications apart, okay? The FMAG is designed to address burn concerns and debris flows and damage done by the fire in the McCombny River watershed, in the McCombny River drainage. The HMAG is actually designed for the Calaveras River watershed. So, that is essentially what we've, we've been looking at. Now, going back to CalAM, these, these grants have matches associated with them, and very briefly, on the FMAG, CalAM has put in a tremendous amount of hours, if you look at, if you, if you were to look at this, and actually meet between that, and I think there's a $1,500 county share to meet the $147,000 match. And then, as, back to the HMAG, HMGP, I keep saying the wrong thing there, the HMGP, that's a $3 million grant, and we have a million dollar match, and as was stated here previously on January 26, that match can be met in a form of a line of credit. That, that program, or that grant, is a line of credit program, so we can control our expenses, and we can control our matches. So, the greater that we get on the matches, on in-kind services or otherwise, if we, if we have $100,000 of a match, then we know we can proceed so much further in the grant. That way, we never overexpend, we never ever overexpend our dollars on the match, and at the end of the program, somebody has to come back, meaning FEMA, and say, "By the way, the county owes us X amount of dollars because you didn't meet the match requirements." So, the HMAG in some ways is a little more forgiving than the, than, excuse me, the HMGP is more forgiving than the FMAG, because the FMAG is pretty clear, we need to get the $147,000 met as a pre-application, which is what we've been doing, and I'd like to say, "We've been doing," county staff has been working on this pretty feverishly over the last few days, but CalAM has been working on this feverishly for months. So, with that said, the, the primary focus is on the McCombny River watershed for one grant, the primary focus on the HMGP is the, the Calaveras. And the amount of work and what the work entails essentially for these programs is seeding, hydroseeding, and slope stabilization. You will note, well, you may not note, but their previous, previous drafts of this docu, of these documents for the FMAG only included work on roads, specifically Ponderosa Road, where they had what they called rolls and dips were supposed to be put in the roads, on both sides of the river. Our Public Works Department felt that that was not necessarily realistic doing work in Amador County. Are there ways around that? Yes, there are. Is there some draft language that I worked on earlier this week to address that? Yes, there is. That's not in the grant today. The other thing that you'll notice in the Board packet is if the Board goes forward with this today, you'll notice that we actually have, that the Board can authorize the CAO and her, or her designee to, to make any changes to the, to the grant as deemed necessary. So, approval-
As long as approval is from FEMA.
Right, absolutely, and, and part of that, we see that's going to be an issue. And the other thing, I, I hate to tell on myself here, but we were quickly running out of time, so one of the things we're going to need to modify in the HMGP and the FMAG grants, both of them are the start times for the, for the programs, and that's something that CALOES and, and FEMA are going to have to tell us what to do as far as the timelines are concerned. Primary concern, the FMAG is something that we probably should have been doing a couple of months ago. It's, that's just, that's just reality, it didn't happen, but CALOES and FEMA are telling us, if we get this in immediately, we can still go under the older requirements and not be, no, not go under the competitive requirements that we would be doing otherwise and competing with LA and San Diego. So, that's kind of it in a nutshell, I know there's a lot to that, but I know that, I know that CalAM is here, and I know that they're going to be interested in speaking as well.
Okay. Any questions from the Board so far?
Well, I do on Ponderosa Road. Why, why can't we leave it in for the Calaveras side? I mean, I don't really, I mean, I'd like to do Amador, but we are the Calaveras County Board, so I'll stick to the Calaveras.
We can, we absolutely can. As a matter of fact, the draft language I worked on the other day included it for both Amador and Calaveras, with the caveat that if, if we did work in Amador, there's a three year maintenance agreement, okay, with these grants. So, if you're doing, if you're moving dirt and you're doing rolling, rolling dips and that kind of thing on Ponderosa Road, we are required pursuant to the grant to maintain those for three years. So, the issue was really, okay, Calaveras County isn't going to be over in Amador County maintaining Ponderosa Road. There is no reason why we can't go ahead and, and have the rolling dips and those kinds of things on Ponderosa Road on this side.
So, when I first heard about this, Amador and Calaveras on Ponderosa Way was in there, and I was okay with that, because really, all we have to do is go to Amador and come up with some kind of a service agreement to, for the next three years, and then we have two happy counties right next to each other. You know, that's how, that's how partnerships work, so I am in favor of, of leaving that in, or I don't know if it's how hard that would be, or if it's, but I am in favor of having that done, because that, that is jacked up, you know, and so it needs to be, it needs to be-
Very technical term for it, man.
Sorry. It's been jacked up, how about that? So, you know, I, I just think it's a benefit to the area, and if it was in there originally, then there's, there was an intention for it, and I believe that, I think we should stick with that intention, and we can work it out with Amador, and I don't think that's a problem at all.
I understand the need for this, and I'm on board with that. There are a couple of things that concern me. Number one, sliding under the wire at the last moment to do this. If we've got anything else that's coming up, I hope we're not scrambling to get it, you know, with these, and I know that it involves a lot of coordination, and I don't want anyone to justify it, but I, I hope that we have, you know, a little bit of time to consider the ones coming up in the future, so that we're not here at the last minute.
This is the reason why I brought it today instead of Tuesday, because Tuesday is the deadline.
I know.
I mean, this has got to be in Sacramento already signed.
I know, these, and that's-
And wanted to give us time to talk about this, so if we were able to do any adjustments or minor adjustments by Tuesday or before, you know, if we get this in, then we can do that.
I appreciate you doing that, Cliff, really, and I'm on board with that. I'm just saying how I feel about this, and I don't, I don't want to see this continue to happen where Supervisor Edson has to scramble us and get it done.
We have had a number of last-minute issues.
Yeah, and the other thing too is, and we're just not really hearing from our, these involve, like, in-kind matches and different types.
Yes, yes.
And I haven't heard a lot from Rebecca Callen on our ability to provide those, and I almost, I don't know, almost, I wish she was here so that we could, like, who's keeping track of-
In-kind.
-these things? Because we're voting, I mean, if I read this correctly, $1,147,000 and some, some additional money, we've got to come up with that. Now, did we get, somebody donated a lot of labor to us that matches that, or we got to come up with $1,001, you know?
Are you talking about which one?
Well, they're both combined, I'm talking both of them. One of them is $147,000 we got to come up with.
Means matching.
And another is a million, if I'm reading this correctly. And maybe we have all the, the, there's just, there's just a lot of cloudiness to me in how this money is being kept, and it seems like one of our partners that should be here talking to us is Rebecca Callen, and I don't see her.
If I may address that a little bit, and I apologize if I wasn't really clear on my, on my introduction on this, the FMAG, excuse me, the, the $147,000 has been, has been met through in-kind services already and documented through CalAM, okay? PG&E is also, and we have the commitment letter, I have it on my desk, I just received it, $100,000 match out of $147,000.
Not PG&E, East Bay Mud.
Sorry, thank you. I apologize. I meant, I meant East Bay Mud, yes. In my mind, I'm thinking about Party Reservoir, and I'm saying PG&E. So, so with that said, thank you for the clarification. It would be, it would be East Bay Mud, $100,000, and then the, the remainder is, is met by CalAM, and then a small portion, and it can be in-kind services, about how much time, let's say Public Works is putting into this. As an example, we have Mike Miller working on this this week, okay? We have Jeff Probitz working on it this week, or this past week, so even their time alone is going to cover more than the $1,500 share. So, I'm not concerned so much about the FMAG, although I think Supervisor Kearney is absolutely correct, show me where that, where that meets the requirements, and that's part of the application to FEMA and CALOES, and those are the things we'll need to change. If they say, you know, $120 for a specific person to do a task multiplied by so many hours, we don't think it's $120, because it's not a weighted rate, it's a straight rate, okay? If, if they do that, I'm just using that as an example, if that is the, if, if that is the case, then we're going to need to go back to the well, and we need to introduce and find other areas to meet that match. And it might be strictly just from county time put into this program. I know that I put a tremendous amount of time into this over the last month, so with that said, that's the, that's the FMAG. The HMGP Supervisor Kearney is much more easily controlled, that's the million dollar match. I'm going to modify that budget to get rid of that $1 that was given to us by Public Works Department this week, but, but it should be, it should be a clean million and $3 million, million dollar match for a $3 million grant. That's the line of credit. We don't expend funds on that program until we know we've got the money ahead of time, period.
Or the matching.
And we have three years, what's very, very important is, remember, you have three years to do these programs. It's not something that needs to be done today or, you know, by December 31st at the end of the calendar year, that kind of thing. So, we actually have time to do this, and Supervisor Kearney, the other thing that really concerned us initially, when this was brought to our attention, oh, back in probably November, December, we were told we had to do a million dollar match, and we all kind of looked at one another and said, "Okay, we don't think that's probably going to happen, we don't know where, you know, we don't know what's happening with our 6.25%, we don't know what's happening with our property tax, we don't know what's happening with this whole entire catastrophic event. We're not going to commit a million dollars that we really don't have to a program that we, that may be a good thing, but we can't make the match." Then it was brought to our attention, and Supervisor Edson and I were at a meeting on, and some of you were there, on, up in Mount Ranch on, on Friday night for, for the community, and at that time, it was brought up by Blake with the Department of Interior, "No, no, no, this is a three-year program, this is a line of credit." And then we, that, of course, I remember the conversation, I thought, "Well, this is certainly a game changer, because we can't come up with a million dollars, and certainly a million dollars overnight. It's a three-year process." The nice thing about the HMGP also is that you do not have to use a full $3 million. So, if you say, "We can only come up over three years with a match to, to equate to the $2 million," okay, that's all, that's all we do. So, that one's really easily controlled.
I appreciate everything you just said, and I thank you for bringing it up and filling me in, but the one thing I did not hear was that our auditor controller isn't a partner in these, and maybe that should be going forward.
We can do that, certainly.
She should be, since we are looking to her to know what's going on, I would think she should know that this is happening from ground zero.
I, I, I can't speak for ground zero, I can only speak from a month ago. I can tell you that Mike Miller, our extra hire person that is working for the Administrative Office, has been working hand-in-hand with her on these and other issues, just so you know, she is in the loop. I can't speak for ground zero, but I can tell you today, she knows what's happening.
Okay.
And if she doesn't, I'd be surprised, because he's reporting to me saying, "Okay, we discussed this, this, and this."
All right, so I'd like to hear from the Callen folks, because after that, we may have more questions.
Go ahead.
If you don't mind.
No, I appreciate that, no, I don't mind.
What about you, Mike?
I'll wait.
Yeah, because, because we may have more questions after that.
I'll wait.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Jan Bray, a registered professional forester with the CalAM team, and a retired CAL FIRE Calaveras forester here, so familiar with Calaveras and Amador Counties. We've been working on the FMAG and HMGP grants since October, and the FMAG was actually ready to go before Christmas. It, we, when we realized it didn't get agendaized with you all, we, we came to the Board and, and got it, as you know, on a successful emergency agenda item in January. So, I'm, I'm going to talk about Ponderosa Way and the Amador County MOA, and then Annie's going to talk about the budget and in-kind work. So, they're all questions you've had some concerns about. Ponderosa Way in the FMAG budget was only in Amador County. It was not, when I was, when I was working, actively working for CAL FIRE, I actually wrote as a certified professional erosion control specialist, a letter to Calaveras County, three-pager of how to fix Calaveras, or to fix Ponderosa Way in Calaveras County. And, and the Public Works have, have done a lot of work. Unfortunately, they fixed the culverts, but no rolling dips or water bars were put in. So, the water's still, the erosion is still going to be a problem in Calaveras County on Ponderosa Way. Ponderosa Way in Amador County has same problems, the culverts are way undersized, and, and there's a lot of sediment being delivered to the McCombny River from Ponderosa Way on Amador County, that's why we put it in. So, to have rolling dips and water bars installed is really important to stop this bleeding sore, if you will. I don't see a problem with having an MOA. Amador County already approved an MOA, I think it was back in December, to, for councils to work together and develop that MOA. So, that was, that was a, an agreed deal with, through Jeff Probitz at that time. So, I would really like to see it still installed and, and have that bleeding sore fixed.
And get the bridge fixed, too?
No, actually, that's owned by CAL FIRE.
Industrial bridge?
Yeah, it's owned by CAL FIRE, and, and they have determined that it's not a stable structure, so that they don't want to replank it. So, I know, it's, it's funny, that Ponderosa Way, it's controlled by different people, and then there's different entities that are involved as well. Any questions while I'm up?
Not now, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you, members of the Board and Chairman. I'm Ann Heisenbuckle, I'm also a registered professional forester. I live in Amador County, I worked for the old American Forest Products Company as a Calaveras County area forester a number of years back, and then I moved away and did a lot of forest policy work, and now I'm back here doing this as a volunteer. So, I wanted to talk a little bit about the match for the two grants, and Brian's explained a lot of that pretty clearly, but I just want to emphasize, especially for the FMAG, the CalAM portion of the match has been met, we, through the hours that we've worked developing these grants between October and, and December, when we thought we were pretty much done, and then making some modifications after that to meet changing requirements from CALOES. East Bay Mud, as you mentioned, pled, has pledged $100,000 match for the, the McCombny watershed. They've done some, they've done a good amount of work out there, but it cannot count because implementation activities cannot be counted as match until after the grant is approved by FEMA and CALOES. So, because of the delays, East Bay Mud finished work that they had been in the middle of and has delayed doing the next work that they plan to do, so that their work can count towards that $100,000 commitment. You also have Calaveras Grown, they're doing, as you know, tons of work out there every week, and they can be a partner, and their work can be applied toward the match. Other donations, Brian mentioned the county's work, Jeff put in a lot of time late last year, working with us in meetings and, and giving us guidance and direction for what, what he wanted, and so we have no problem at all meeting the match for the FMAG, it's, it's done, with the exception of the work that will be accrued, that $100,000 worth of value through East Bay Mud's work and anything Calaveras Grown is doing in that watershed. For the HMGP, as Brian explained, that's going to function as a line of credit. We already have, as of today, exceeded the committed amount of match that CalAM has, has offered to do through our work on that grant. Because it's application development, it can count now, and, and all the implementation, again, has to count only after the grant is approved. So, all the work that the county is doing in that watershed to oversee or implement activities, work that Calaveras Grown is doing, it all has to be documented as in-kind, but all of that will, will count as the accrual of your share of the match. And, believe me, with the amount of work the county and everybody else is doing out there, I'm sure you will not have any trouble meeting that commitment and getting the full amount of the grant. But if you don't, as Brian explained, you only accrue match and then receive money, you're not going to be in debt any amount to the county.
Okay, great. Is, on the accrued match and the way it's, that information is gathered, is that, like, pre-approved before the funds, the funding would come?
That's the way I understand it. I wasn't at the meeting that Brian had recently with the OES and FEMA people, but they do not give the money until you submit the in-kind, and they would have to approve that, and if they, like you said, if they had a question about some of the documentation, they probably would wait for you to clarify that before they counted that as part of the match.
Right, great. All right, thank you.
The only other thing I would like to add is CALOES and FEMA have been tremendous in helping us through this process in October, well, we first met with them early November, so November and December, and since then, in trying to help get this, to this point where you can approve it. So, I just want to give a lot of credit to them, they're the best agency folks I've ever worked with. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would, I would also echo that, and Jan did a wonderful job explaining that, but again, I can't overemphasize the amount of work that, that CalAM has done, that East Bay Mud is doing, that certainly Calaveras Grown is doing. Once, once the trigger is pulled on these grants, especially, well, the HMGP, all of a sudden, that becomes, all the time, everything they're doing, from the seed to the equipment to the man-hours, becomes part of our match, which is, which is a real good thing, and certainly, if you saw the article a couple of weeks ago, or maybe it was last week, in the Enterprise, about the work that's being done out there by, by Calaveras Grown, and how much more really needs to be done, as we have a long road in front of us, but, but the reality is, at least that is, can be an in-kind match, and that's very, very helpful. So, yeah.
A couple of quick comments. I share Supervisor Kearney's concerns about how come here we are again, looking at $3 million grant, and it's a last-minute type situation, and this is not the first time we've been here as a Board. Just in our short term, in the last year. My other concern is, what else is on, behind the door? I think we need to, and this is separate from our folks that have done a great job since October, putting this program, thank you very much, folks, for that. But on a separate issue, I need to know, from my own information, application, why this happened, who's responsible for it, and why it did not get done at the time that we were advised, and I'll take my own time to do that, not the Board's time. Another issue I have is, in this process, do we have the ability to maybe use our local vendors and the materials used for this erosion control? And I'm going to be very specific on this, some of our new wattle programs and pine needles, because Supervisor Wright and I have very serious problems in our districts, and we have some availability of the resources to be used right here in Oak County. Can that happen?
Good, because they're actually hauling wattles into Smiley County right now.
I wanted, I, I'd like to address that, that's a great point. My understanding is that they are making wattles locally out of pine needles. The best part of that is, there's two really positive things about that, is the material they're using does not require maintenance because it's designed to degrade over a period of time, not just the pine needles, but the, the material that it's in. And then also, for those areas that are in, areas where-
And then also, for those areas that are in, areas where they're high alkaline soils, pine needles work as an acidic agent and help neutralize the soil. So just the pH of the soil.
Sounds like a win-win to me.
I think it's a win-win and my understanding is that it's being done right here in San Andreas. I can't remember the contractor. I, I think I know who it is, but I hate to say it because I might be wrong about that. But it is being done and it's a great use, it is a great use of pine needles. I agree. Yeah.
Okay, great. That, that's one of my concerns. Once again, I want to, I want to share the concern that Supervisor Kearney had. We should be hearing from our auditor.
There's someone.
She's here.
There's someone here from the auditor.
Oh, okay, great. Once again, I'm very concerned that we don't know what we're doing in some areas and we're playing catch-up and losing out the benefits of what we can do to make this county back over again. Yep, sorry.
Aren't you glad we put you on the spot?
Absolutely. Kathy Gomes speaking for Rebecca. She just called in. She wanted you to be aware that there would be single audit requirements for this funding because it is federal funding. And that's a pretty exhaustive type of audit, so there would be that. And then the other thing is, on the in-kind donations, there are very specific requirements that need to be met in order for those to actually be approved. So you can't say that your in-kind labor is at a $100 per hour rate when it actually is a clerical position. You have to be very specific and it has to be realistic and backed up pretty heavily by data. So cross your Ts, dot your Is.
Well, and the auditors should be involved in, in putting a plan together to be able to collect that correct data. That way, that way, everybody's aware of it and as you move forward with whatever project it is.
And hopefully doing it before the fact and not after.
Wouldn't that be great?
Yes.
I agree with that.
Now, I have a question for the Auditor's Department. Do you have enough staff to do this? Can this be done and still carry on the business of the county? That's my worry.
Um, I, it depends on how extensive it is. We, we are pretty thinly staffed, but we always get the job done. So.
But if it.
We, we do have, we actually have one extra hire person in now helping with Butte Fire, all the claim work and so we may need to continue her.
There you go. Is there a procedure available should you need additional staff? Can you go outside and with contract staff, like we did with our building department?
Probably, yeah, with administrative and board approval.
Bring in additional staff to handle situations that need to be addressed immediately instead of waiting two days before it's due.
So in this, if we approve it, I would like to see Auditor Controller come up with a, basically a payment plan, you know, how we're going to do that. And, and also an agreement that if, if it is necessary for, for them to have a little extra support, that she decides what that is.
Exactly. And she would, she would go to admin and then to the board in order to do that.
Yeah, because we don't want any, any errors.
Right.
Thank you for running over.
Sure.
I didn't mean to be blaming you, it's just.
No, no.
We identified a problem, we got to provide a solution for the folks.
Right, exactly.
Well, I agree with what she said. It should be before instead of after the fact. It makes it hard and.
And then you risk not getting the money.
Well.
Then the county could be on the hook for it, so.
We need that involvement to, you know, educate our votes. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming over. Thanks. All right, any other public comments? Board comments? George, go ahead. Got to move a little quicker there, George.
I'm sorry. I'm approaching 70 in May. I, I support the recommendation of this today, so it's just my two cents. Thank you.
Also, I want to clarify for the record that administration's purpose in this was, we were brought in, as you know, within the last month in trying to get this, this taken care of. Once this is, once these applications are in, these projects go back to our Public Works Department where they were generated from. So I just want to make sure that you understand that indeed, we're not going to be holding on to this. We can provide oversight as necessary, but the reality is, it's, it's going to, the programs themselves, but the HMGP and the FMAG, both are going to be run out of Public Works where they were generated. So it's very important to know. Also, I apologize for the tardiness of, of these issues. Be happy to speak to the board independently on that issue.
Okay. One concern I do have when we, when we talk about and address that issue, were we able to provide the necessary resources to Public Works to handle this? And that, that's my concern.
Well, again, if you look at the grant funding, I mean, as far as, as far as, and I'll just come, just going to step outside of this, the tree mortality issue, not in terms of bug kill or, or tree kill from, from the beetle, but from the burn trees alone. My understanding is that Public Works is contracting with a, with a company to do that work. And you are absolutely correct, the staff there can't pick up that additional duty because something else has to be put aside. As far as the, as far as the work for the HMGP and the FMAG, that's something that our Director of Public Works had worked out. I don't know what his plans were as to whether he actually wanted to bring in a contract or if he wanted to do that out of his, out of his existing staff. My thought is, he's going to be in a tough spot trying to do that out of existing staff.
I, I want to make sure he has availability to get those resources in completely.
Absolutely. Otherwise, it doesn't make sense to go forward with the grants.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
If I could address that, there is money in the budget for the grant money to be used on project management. So as you meet your match and you get money from FEMA and CAL OES, you can use that money to pay for what it takes to do the project management.
And thank you, Ann, because that's, she brings up a critical point here. One of the things we did discuss over the last week, and I, I spoke with FEMA about this as well as CAL OES, because we need to make sure that we're meeting all the requirements, just like you were stating to the auditor. We don't want to be, we don't want to be caught, we don't want to be caught sideways on this thing. But I'm sorry, Ann, what was your statement again? I apologize.
That if, if you look at the budget for each of the grants, one of the line items is project, project management.
Yes, thank you.
And that money, as you've met your match and you have money coming in from FEMA, you can use that money to pay for added staff or a contractor or whatever you need to do the project management.
Thank you.
Good.
What I was, what I'm really, what I, what I also wanted to bring up and to support what Ann is stating is a project manager, again, meeting with FEMA and CAL OES. We have to be so careful on these grants. If you give them the wrong title, you will not get reimbursed. So if we call them anything else but a project manager, they're not going to recognize it. Even if you say they worked 100% of the time on the F, the FMAG or the HMGP, doesn't really much matter. So that is one of the things I know I spoke with Public Works about as well. You need to have a project manager that is dedicated to nothing but coordinating this entire effort.
All right, so we can work that out through Auditor Controller's office and, and the Public Works Department.
I would just like to make one more comment. Several weeks ago, I talked to the board about the wood issue and I've been in contact with PG&E and Captain over at the jail, as well as the Public Works Director, and we're attempting to work out all the aspects. I think PG&E has about 1,000 logs at this point. And we're attempting to find a suitable location because I don't think we can get it all in the public works yard here in town. But our proposal, working with Common Ground Services, is to have the prisoners cut the logs up and split them up and stack them. And Common Ground Services has a list of senior centers, their senior sen, seniors?
Centers.
Yeah, thank you. Don't make fun of my speech impediment, please. Anyway, so they're going to contact those people and we're attempting to try and hire somebody through the Agency 12 on aging to make the deliveries to those senior center, seniors.
George, I just wanted to let you know, I'm sorry to interrupt you there. The, have you contacted Robert Smith, the Smith Grinding? Because they're, they're opening a, a yard down in Wallace.
In Wa, Wallace?
Yeah, they're, they're actually already operating out of Wallace.
Okay, nobody, nobody's shared that information with me and.
Just Smith Grinding.
Smith Grinding?
Grinding. Smith Grinding, I guess.
Oh, yeah, I know who they are. Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Because that's, that's where they're, I think the trees are going, so.
From.
On the fire.
From PG&E's trees?
Yes.
Well, that's not what the PG&E people told me.
Well, anyway, make sure you're talking to them.
Okay, so I just.
Mr. Chair on this issue, I have a comment.
Sure.
If these are not involved with the debris from the fire, and you're talking about the PG&E trees that are held for their utilities and their infrastructure.
Uh-huh.
You need to check with CAL FIRE because the transportation of those logs may involve certain permits.
Right.
I'm not saying that they can or cannot do it.
No.
We're facing that issue in my district when our, our trees are drawn.
Yes, sir.
All right, so we'd like to, George, we'd like to stay on topic here. This is about the grants.
Yeah, okay, okay, sorry.
Thank you.
That's all right.
All right. So, any further comments? All right, so are we going to then put Ponderosa back in? That'd be the question. I personally think we should.
Sure, especially if they already have an agreement with Amador County to investigate. So that was my main concern on the Amador side. I didn't want to be voting for something that was not going to happen on the Amador.
I just wanted to chime in. There isn't an agreement in place. It's my understanding that there was some discussion at the Amador County Board of Supervisors meeting. Staff was directed, County Council from Amador was directed to work with my office to draft an MOU. Our offices have been in communication, however, since then, it was my understanding that the description, the scope was going to be changing to where an MOU was no longer going to be needed. So then we, we stopped working on it because I wasn't sure, it wasn't clear on what the purpose or intent of the MOU would be. So if there is in fact going to be work done on the Amador side, on the public, on Amador County right-of-way, then I, I need to know what that is and, and so that we can actually have meaningful discussions with their office to draft an MOU. But that's, there is not.
There's been, there's no formal agreement, but there's been direction and, I mean, they were directed to try to work something out.
There was direction, at least my understanding, there was direction from the Amador County Board of Supervisors for their County Council to work with my office to negotiate an MOU. But there isn't a formal MOU that has in fact been completed because there, because things have been changing and.
And that's understandable, I mean, this is just a grant application anyway. So I mean, it's not like everything has to be, you know, completely signed.
We got time anyhow, right? Because it's a progressive, on that portion, that, that grant is the progressive grant, right? So.
I agree. And your portrayal is, is my understanding. I don't know why it stopped. I, I'm not privy to that information, but I would suggest that in the MOA or MOU, whichever one it is, that, that it state, after the initial work is completed, that, that maintenance for that transfer to Amador County Public Works. Then it, it makes it really easy, you know? Calaveras County trucks aren't having to run over there in graders and whatever. And it, and I'm, I'm certain after talking with all of the Boards of Supervisors over there, that they would be more than happy to accept that as part of the MOA.
Okay. Anybody else? You guys agree with that?
Yeah.
All right, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with the language of Ponderosa Road that back into it.
That's for both applications?
For both of them.
No, it's only in the FMAG.
Yes, it's only the FMAG.
The motion is to approve both of them with the change to the FMAG.
I, I second Chris's motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Done deal.
Okay.
All right. Maybe answer that. Somebody wants to get on?
Forty-five minute Board of Supervisors meeting. That's a record. For us, it's pretty much unheard of. That's a record.
All right, so at this time, I'd like to end the meeting, so we're adjourned.
So do I.